Good evening and welcome to your city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, November 21st, 2017, and it is 7:00 PM. Regular meetings are held on the first and third Tuesday of each month at 7:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall. Madam City Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Davies?
Present.
Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Councilmember Susiewitz?
Present.
Mayor Protem Jenaway?
Present.
And Mayor Minigar?
Present.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Thank you. At this juncture, I would like to ask Reverend John Urel of Saint Timothy Catholic Church to come forward for the invocation, and then we will have Boy Scout Troop 772 come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Good evening. Loving God, in this Thanksgiving time, we thank you for food, and we remember the hungry. Thank you for health, and we remember those who are sick. Thank you for family and friends, and we remember those without friends or family. We thank you for freedom, and we remember the enslaved. May these remembrances stir us to service. May your countless gifts be acknowledged in our community of Laguna Niguel. And may your blessings come upon our city council in this meeting tonight, and grateful for all you bestow upon us each day, we say amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. Boy Scout Troop 772, color guard advance. Please place your right hand over your heart. Those in uniform and veterans salute. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To? Audience, you may be seated.
At this juncture, I would like to call up any troop leaders that happen to be present in the audience to join us. Otherwise, I'd like to ask you to state your first name and which school you go to.
Kevin, Don Juan Avila Middle School.
My name's Alan, and I go to Alisa Viejo Middle School.
My name is Issa Belushi, and I go to Alisa Viejo Middle School.
My name's Ethan, and I go to DJAMs.
My name is Matthew, and I go to DJAMs.
Very good. Troop 772 is very special to all of us, to the city of Laguna Niguel, and more specifically to me, because my son graduated from Troop 772 by becoming Eagle two years ago, and now he's at UC Berkeley enjoying life. Very good, thank you very much. I guess we have the photo up now. Very good. I guess this is it. We're gonna have two oral presentations, so. All right, our first presentation is a youth committee update at this time. I would like to ask, let's see, since Avery Walker is not present, I would like to ask the committee members, John Stensby and Matthew Richardson, to make a presentation to us. Welcome.
Hello, City Council. We are under the Gretchen Malkin, and currently we're working on two projects at the moment. One is Cookies with Cops, and the other one is the Christmas Parade. For Cookies and Cops, it is for us to try to get teens more comfortable around the police, because when you go to a lot of our local high schools, the teens feel like the cops are out to get us, but we know that they're just here to help us and keep us safe. So we're trying to get them in with the cops, with like Cookies and Coffee for free, so they could interact with them and just learn that they're not out to get them, that they're here to protect them.
Yeah, the main purpose of Cookies and Cops is just to make teens a little more comfortable with the cops in the community, because like Matt said, there's a little tension that's stereotyped, and we've all had that thought, but the purpose of this event is just to gather teens together and meet with police and just have a fun time and interact. Another major project that we're working on is the Holiday Parade, and as all of us know, we ride the segways, it's gonna be so much fun. We've been working on this, and I mean, it's a big mark in our year, and it's so much fun, and in the future, we have the College and Jobs Fair, which is a few months away. And, but yeah, our youth council, we've been doing a lot of projects, we've been working hard, and we're striving to make the teen community as best as possible. Anything else?
Yeah, just the Christmas Parade, that's pretty much our event to market the youth committee, to get more teenagers to know who we are and know what we do. And also the Job Fair and College Fair, that's just to get more teens, a lot of teens, when their parents want them to get a job, but they're really timid to go out and find one and to just go interview. So they'll go there, and where the hires are there to see them, so it makes it more comfortable for them to go look for jobs.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. On behalf of this entire city council, thank you for your service to our beautiful and great city. You guys are the future leaders of this great city, so we rely upon you to make Laguna Niguel, even though it's a great city, a greater city. If my colleagues have any questions, please.
If you don't mind, first off, both you guys, great job. You guys are, what the mayor said is true, you guys comfortable talking to a group like this on TV, you know, fantastic job. And then to the deputies and sheriffs out there, Matt Richardson and John Stensby, they got license, no, just make sure that, these are the good guys. Okay, thank you.
Very good, and now we will, oh, I apologize, please, Mayor Protem Jenaway.
Okay, well, it's my absolute delight to serve as the council liaison, or one of the council liaisons, to the youth committee. And we've seen the youth committee evolve over the years and really come forward some incredible programs for our teens. The purpose of the youth committee is to advise the city council on policies for teens and also for activities to bring them as, to participate in different city activities. Over the years, they've done a suicide prevention brochure, have had a workshop. The College Fair, which will be coming up in March, is a big event where we have a lot of our high school students, you know, they get to meet their prospective colleges and also employers. But thank you two gentlemen for representing the committee. There are 15 members, they're all high school students who reside in Laguna Niguel, and they are interviewed by the city council and selected by the city council. So appreciate what you're doing and all the work of all the youth committee members. Thank you.
Councilmember John Mark Jennings?
Great, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, and you know, you may have an opinion about the youth in our society and our city and all that, but if you want to make very certain that the future is in fantastic hands, I invite you to come and sit in one of our youth committee meetings. They are, they are truly not only great students and great people and all of that, but they're really nice, they really do care, and I assume that there's thousands more like them out there. So it is a very, very good thing. It's my high honor to serve along with Mayor Protem Jenaway as the council liaison for that, and I appreciate you fellows coming tonight, so thank you very much.
Very good. And now we will receive a presentation from Molten Niguel Water District regarding their proposed 2018 rate adjustment. At this time, I would like to ask the following representatives to come forward for the presentation, the Honorable Dwayne Cave, who's already ready to go, as always, Board Member Jake Volabrecht, Director of Regional and Legal Affairs, and Drew Atwater, Director of Planning. We also have in the audience this evening, the Honorable Larry Lisette, Board Member, let's see, the Honorable Dick Fiore, and also the General Manager, Ms. June Lopez. Please.
Thank you very much, Mayor, City Council. My name's Dwayne Cave, and I'm here tonight as Director of the Molten Niguel Water District. And just as you're so proud to be representatives of the great city of Laguna Niguel, we're also very proud to be representatives of our customers at Molten Niguel Water District. With me today, I have fellow directors, as you said, Larry Lazott and Dick Fiore, we're real happy that they're here, and it's really, we have a superstar, rock star out there, it's our General Manager, June Lopez, so we're real happy to have them in our audience today. At Molten Niguel, we serve over 170,000 residents in Laguna Niguel, Aliso Viejo, Mission Viejo, Laguna Hills, San Juan Capistrano, and Dana Point. And even though we have seen some trying years due to the drought, our customers have responded like champions. That was evident to you last Tuesday at Grand Park, where we celebrated the removal of 5 million square feet of turf in the district that took the last five years, accounting, amounting to a 500 million gallon water savings. And how did we do this? Here's some numbers that we have for you. 2,551 turf removal projects, that's a lot of numbers, but those include homes, businesses, and recreation facilities. 5 million square feet have replaced turf, an area larger than the Vatican City, that's something that Director Prabulsky likes to point out all the time. Another number is 228.5 million gallons of annual water savings, equivalent to filling 346 Olympic-sized swimming pools. This program has saved our customers money and water. And at the district, we are listening to our customers, that's why we're here tonight, and we're real happy to put on this presentation. So to help bring you up to date on Molten Niguel and what's going on, I'd now like to bring up Jake Volabrecht, he's the Director of Regional and Legal Affairs. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you very much, Director Cave. I'm Jake Volabrecht, it's a privilege to address you tonight, honorable mayor and city council members. I serve as the district's Director of Regional and Legal Affairs, and as Director Cave mentioned, Molten Niguel Water District delivers drinking water and recycled water to 22,157 households and businesses within the city limits. And we're here tonight to give you an update on Molten Niguel's 2018 rate adjustment that we've proposed for next year, and an update on our financial position. Our Director of Planning, Drew Atwater, will give you this presentation shortly, and you'll see that it's a very positive reflection of long-term planning by our district's Board of Directors, supported by its engineering staff and financial planning team. And before I turn it over to Drew, I'd like to share a couple of projects that the district is working on. First and foremost is our TAP initiative. This is an initiative that our board adopted in August to recommit ourselves to transparency, access, and participation. Ultimately, our goal is to promote a collaborative atmosphere where input from our community and our customers is welcomed, that we are keeping all channels open so that we can continue to adapt and evolve, and ultimately advance the district's mission of providing cost-effective and reliable water service to our customers and residents. A second project we are working on is consolidating our administrative offices with our operations center in Laguna Hills. Right now, our headquarters is based at the corner of La Paz and Avila, and we're looking at a project to consolidate it at our operations center. And this will make us more efficient in a variety of ways. It'll help us consolidate all of our personnel, all of our facilities, our information systems and equipment on one site, so that we can make more efficient use of land that we already have, rather than purchasing more land and additional facilities to house our growing operation, to serve this community. And finally, our long-term CIP, our capital improvement program is fundamental to the service we provide to our residents, the water facilities that support our neighborhoods, the pipelines, the pump stations, the reservoirs, and wastewater mains, and treatment plants. These are all facilities that, as they come to the end of their service lives, need to be renewed, and the district has planned to invest $300 million over the next 10 years to revitalize the facilities so that they can continue to serve for generations to come. Now I'd like to introduce Drew Atwater. Drew is our Director of Planning. He and his team are responsible for the entire analytical effort that supports all of our district's major decisions. He oversees the water use efficiency team and the district's financial analysis and management team, and this includes a team of data scientists that analyze water usage and provide analytical tools and predictive models to support our boards and management's decision-making, so that they can make more informed and more evidence-based decisions on where we invest our residents' dollars. Now Drew will share with you some of the key drivers and benefits that we see in the proposed 2018 rate adjustment. I'll turn it over to Drew, thank you.
Thanks Jake. Sorry, I'm getting over cold, so I brought some water in case, just as my title indicates, I want to make sure I plan for all contingencies. But I just wanted to, first off, thank city staff and the council, we have a tremendous relationship with the city of Laguna Niguel, and we really appreciate that relationship. And as I go through the district update on some of our initiatives and the rates themselves, I just wanted to commend, because that partnership really has built on the successes that we've experienced, and it's really a collaborative effort, and we really appreciate that relationship. So the key thing, back in 2014, we laid out a plan, because in the past, we've done sharper increases to our rates, and so we wanted to make sure that we have a prudent plan. And as part of that, we had a 10-year forecast, and as Jake mentioned, our capital improvement program, imported water costs and all of that were part of that, so we can provide incremental adjustments into the future. The good news, to kind of cut to the point and the key summary, is that the plan is, we're proposing to stay along that course we laid out in 2014. The district's in a very strong financial position as we go into 2018, and we're proposing the rate adjustments, and part of that is laying out that consistent financial future and having that long-term vision for financial security for the district. Fitch recently rerated the district, and we had the highest rating from Fitch at AAA, and they had a very positive review of the district, and it's really built off of the strategy that we had through the last drought, which was that partnership with the community to avoid the sorts of mandates that a lot of agencies took, telling people when to water and how much to water, and focusing more on incentives for efficiency and long-term efficiency for customers, and really to discourage waste and reasonable use, but having an efficiency-based approach. This strategy was recognized by the state, we were only one of two agencies who had an alternate plan approved through that, and that really provided the financial future. And as we look throughout the state of California, over $700 million was lost by water agencies during the drought. And as I mentioned before, we laid out a plan before the drought, and as we look to today, we are along that same plan because of that, the rate structure that we have, providing those choices that customers can have, and laying out that future, that's really provided a strong financial footing for the district. Overall, this is the forecasted, proposed adjustments to rates over the next four years. And as we look to this, we look at a 4% incremental adjustment each of the next four years across all of the systems that the district has. This is the revenue that we would need to collect to maintain cost escalations. The key drivers really, first and foremost, we've seen some dramatic increases in the costs for wastewater treatment provided by our regional wastewater authority. In the last three years, we've seen an 80% increase in the administrative costs for that agency, and just the last, from the previous year to the next year, in terms of budgeting, we've seen a 10% year-over-year change in costs. For our wastewater costs, as you can see, we're showing a 5.5% increase in costs. That agency provides, and South Orange County Wastewater Authority, roughly half the cost, because we provide the collections for wastewater, but they provide the treatment for most of the wastewater from the district. The other two systems, the water services and recycled water, were showing more modest increases at an average of 3% per year. The key drivers overall, as Jake noted, investments in infrastructure, and lastly, the wholesale water increases, one of the key water issues to date has been the California Water Fix. But those proposed cost increases are included in the forecasts that we have over the next 10 years, and are included in the adjustments that you see. And these are averages, and so actually, some customers, we do an alignment of costs to make sure that those who create costs are proportionately paying for those costs, but so some customers will actually see a decrease in their bill even as we make that alignment. As we survey some of our peers in South Orange County, we see that we're performing very well. Our Board of Directors has been very prudent in financial investments and making sure that we're in a strong financial position. And as we look out comparing the average bill in 2017 versus the average bill with the proposed changes, we see that we are still at least a quarter less than the nearest agency, with some of the more expensive services for the average single-family household, more than double the cost of service from Molten Niguel Water District. So we see ourselves as really leaders in terms of having the lowest average bill in South Orange County and providing a high level of service at an affordable cost. And the key thing also is the outreach to our community. So we always revise and iterate on the processes that we provide, and so we really took to our Proposition 218 process, that's a required element, but we really wanted to refine that, and we took the 218 notice that we send to all of our customers and really tried to turn it into an infographic-heavy brochure to try and break down some of the complex ideas, more simply so that people can understand the issues at play and break down the major drivers, the rate structure, and how to ask questions. And actually, I was the person, as you can see, for questions, so that they get it straight from the person who has all the details in terms of the rate study. And we've met with over 30 key stakeholders throughout the community, really taking the attitude that we want to meet with anyone who's interested, anyone who has any questions, to provide just all the facts and make sure that all the questions are answered, because we have a good story. We've really been really proactive in our financial planning, we're investing in infrastructure to make sure that we don't have any sort of asset failures, being proactive and maintaining those, and keeping up with the costs of some of the external agencies that are driving costs. As was mentioned also, the district really wants to make sure that we utilize the information that we have to best serve our ratepayers. So we're part of an innovative group called the California Data Collaborative, which takes information across agencies to see what works best where, and utilize that information to right-size infrastructure, and actually, one of the projects from this saved our ratepayers over $20 million from better planning for financial, for the financial needs for key assets and seasonal storage, that based off of using some sophisticated demand forecasting, actually from a volunteer from Netflix, whose day job was working on movie demand content forecasting, same kind of approach to water demand forecasting, and that kind of effort, which was a volunteer effort, saved the district $20 million. And so these are the kinds of innovative partnerships that really helped save ratepayer funds and tap into a new pool of talents to make sure that we maintain that lowest-average bill in South Orange County. As part of our rate structure, there is the incremental increases in prices as customers go over the budget, and that money's directly invested back into the community. As mentioned, with the really successful event hosted by the city at the Crown Valley Park, and celebrating the 5 million square feet of turf, but we've been expanding our programs to not just rest on the last few years of programs and try to refine and build off those. So we have a portfolio demand management programs to help customers, provide tools, educational workshops, providing the rate structure itself, and having that choice and not mandating when people use water, and also taking that information so that we can have marketing targeted to customers to those who it would mean most to them. So we don't just send blanket messages to everyone, but to those who have a large landscape that are using a lot of water, send one message on how to put a smart irrigation controller in, and those who have a condo may be focused more on indoor efficiency opportunities, to make sure that the message is closely aligned with what would be helpful to someone, and that's been a real key part of our ongoing strategy and refinement. As we've evolved in our programs, we've been developing new pilot programs with having a one-stop-shop of smart irrigation controllers, direct install programs to help people through some of these processes. It's hard to figure out how to set up a smart irrigation controller, so having someone come out, do a full irrigation audit, see where water is used where, and help set that up, hosting lots of workshops, we host over 20 irrigation and landscape workshops a year for over 600 residents, but then building off of that and having customer portals and piloting smart meter technology and advanced meter infrastructure to have near-real-time water information. technology and advanced meter infrastructure to have near-real-time water information and leak alerts, so that customers can fix leaks before they get the next bill. So trying to take that lesson of being proactive and providing as much information and tools to our customers as we can. And lastly, I just want to thank again the city for hosting the beautiful event last week, and it was really successful and a real key milestone as we look to maintain efficiency, make proactive investments in water reliability. And that's really what this was, is an investment back in the community, but it helps to maintain a reliable source of water into the future. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you very much for your presentation. I do have three quick questions for you.
Perfect.
What was your assumption with regard to the inflation rate? Your proposed rate increase happens to be 4% for four years because of your general fund allocations for potable, recyclable, and also wastewater. So you're using 4%. The inflation rate that you're assuming is?
So we actually did a detailed review of, we have 2,000 different line items at different costs. And so we wanted to make sure that the inflation reflects each individual cost. So for instance, the cost of water supply goes up about 4% per year, and for the potable water system, that's one of the largest costs. We also look at costs like utilities, electricity, things like that. So those had a different cost inflation. So I guess, in short, we had different cost inflators for different components of costs. And then there's also not just the operating costs that were inflated, but we have a capital improvement program. We need to make sure that we have a net operating position to reinvest our funds back into those assets and have the available cash to pay for infrastructure projects.
So let me get back to it. In our city, we have 66,000 population. And if I understand you correctly, you mentioned that you serve almost 22,000.
Accounts. So it's an average of three people per household.
So if I would be the spokesperson for each individual household in our beautiful city, then if you're going to be raising it by 4%, then for individual ratepayers, because of the inflation, I mean, in what I do, I assume 3% inflation, because I get all these indices, you know, from Washington DC, from the Labor Department. So my point is, the bottom line to the end users, to our residents, would not be a significant negative impact.
No, this is not a significant impact to, some agencies in the state are looking at double-digit year-over-year increases, and that's not what we're proposing. We're proposing a 4%, which is in line with a lot of the inflationary cost increases, but we're also investing in infrastructure as well.
And my second question is, your CIP program is four years or five years?
We do a 10-year.
Oh, you do 10?
Yes. And so it's about $300 million that we're projected to be spending in infrastructure over the next 10 years.
And it gets approved by your board?
Yeah, we review it annually.
Majority, or it has to be because of?
It's a majority, but we've had unanimous vote.
Unanimous. And last question, would you elaborate on Prop 218? You can refresh my memories and for the audience, too.
Sure, no problem. So Proposition 218 requires for any sort of rate increase, especially for like water, wastewater, and utility services, that we send a notice to all of our customers, at least 45 days before holding a public hearing, at which point customers can come to voice any questions, submit protests, and it's really a transparency initiative to engage the public in the ratemaking process. And so we send out those notices, and our public hearing is December 11th at 6:00 PM.
Very good. Thank you. Now I turn to my colleagues, Mayor Protem, Elaine Genoway, please.
Hi, thank you for being here, Mr. Atwater.
Of course.
Just a couple of questions from some of the numbers I picked up off the slide, and I may not have it correct, so please correct me. The average monthly bill increase would be about $2.26, is that?
Yes, it's about 4%.
Okay, so $2.26 is the monthly increase for the average homeowner.
The average, yes.
Okay.
Some will be less, some will be more, depending on.
Okay, so I just thought that's pretty good, 2.26. I haven't seen any other, my other bills go up by that little. But when's the last time you had a rate increase?
We've been doing since April 2015. We did an increase at that point, and then we've done every January 1st, an increase.
Okay, so annually?
Yes.
And then with the tiered pricing, is the increase, is that paraded across the different tiers, or is it all at the first tier, or how does that work?
Great question. So we've actually decreased our meter charge a little bit less than a dollar, because we looked at our fixed and variable costs. And as I mentioned, we were able to have a financial resiliency, because we've aligned fixed and variable costs with fixed and variable revenue. So we're aligning that again, and we're actually reducing our meter charge. And so the variable charge is going up a little bit more than the 3% we mentioned on water. But you're actually going to see a decrease. And we think this is helpful to customers, because now they have more choice and control over their bill. So that if they're a hyper-efficient customer, they can decrease their bill more than they could in the past, because that fixed charge is fixed monthly, regardless of how much water you use. And so if we decrease that, and more of that revenue is collected on the variable side, it provides customers with that control to reduce it based on their consumption decisions.
Okay, so that 2.26 increase will be on the variable side of your bill?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Lori Davies.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Atwater. I live in a condo complex, I'm president of our HOA, and the one problem with that is you really can't control the uses of water with your neighbors. And obviously, it's one bill that comes to our management. What suggestions can you do? And I like the fact that I saw that, you know, you do the irrigation audit. Is that something that you do free, that you can come in and work with our landscapers? Because that's usually where most of the cost is coming from, is the landscaping. And any other suggestions? Because it's tough, again, you can't really tell tenants how to use your water, you can't control that.
That's a really good point, and that's one of the key things that we've had with the stakeholder process, is that we've been talking to a lot of homeowners associations and a lot of landscapers. And yes, we provide free landscape audits, and we'll go out and work with them to find opportunities. We have a number of rebates from basically the smart irrigation controllers that we have. The rebate we provide makes most systems free for them, so that it'll adjust as the climate changes and automatically adjusts. We have high-frequency sprinkler nozzles, we still have our turf removal program, it's offered at $2 a square foot. So yes, I would encourage them to reach out to us, and we'd be more than happy to discuss with them.
And you said the turf program's still going on?
Yes.
Okay, great, that's, expect a call. Thanks.
Perfect.
Councilman Jerry Schlusewitz, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I just want to thank you, Mr. Atwater, and the entire team for coming out on your Tuesday night. You guys do a great job as a councilor, as a body, a board, and again, staff back there as well. It's not easy to raise rates and then to come out publicly and stand up and go city to city, as I know you do, especially this city. You know, appreciate you guys doing that, and gals. It greatly shows that you guys are doing the right thing, and you stand up for it. And thank you for keeping our rates low.
Appreciate it. Thanks for the invite.
Last, but definitely not least, council member John Mark Jennings.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo those comments and appreciate those. I, too, you know, you all perform a critical service that is so often able to be taken for granted, but you all never do, along with our other utility providers, and we have some of those in the House as well. You have the closest contact with our residents, even much more so than the city does. And so this inter-agency partnership that we have with you all and our other utility providers is probably the most critical thing that we do as a council, along with providing safety. And I just want to commend the board, many of whom are here tonight from Maltinigal and the general manager, for all the work that you do year-over-year on making this, you know, an easy process, and what has been in the drought year is one of the most difficult things to do. So you have my appreciation, and the rest of the board as well. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your complete and comprehensive presentation. Good luck. All right, that concludes our presentation this evening. We will now move on to the public communications. The first one that I have is Mr. David Simpson.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council, city staff. My name is David Simpson. I live at 30872 Kaia Barbosa. I'm the former chairman of the board of the Chamber of Commerce, and I've come today with a little idea. During Christmas time, our city spends an awful lot of money in presents and things. Wouldn't it be great if we could all keep it right here in our city and put it in the coffers of our restaurants and our stores? Well, I'm here today to tell you about the joint program we have with the city and the chamber called Shop Laguna Nogal, and it starts on Black Friday. Black Friday means there's got to be an awful lot of money coming in. It's called Black Friday because all the businesses finally make a profit for all the year. And we want to sort of capture that, and we want to make sure all the money and the revenue stays right here in the city. The program goes something like this. It starts on Black Friday and goes through the shopping period, and we want to encourage everyone to save your receipts at your restaurants, your stores, and everything, and save them. And we have little envelopes that you can receive. Just go down to Chamber Office, which is just right down the way here, Chamber Office, throw them in there, and at some point in January, we'll have a drawing. And each one of those receipts is a chance for you to earn a little money. We have cash prizes, up to $1,000 now, I think, $1,000 for first place, $500 and down. So just want to encourage everyone to save those receipts, and if you get one of these envelopes, and towards the end of the, after you're done shopping all this and spending all this money, please drop it off at the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your service to our great city. All right, I just wanted to mention, any person wishing to address the city council on any matter, whether or not it appears on this agenda, is required to submit a completed gold-colored request to speak form to the Madam City Clerk prior to being heard by the city council, and each person will be given three minutes to speak. And the last one that I have is Mr. Robert Gall with regard to the Sun Point. Now, Mr. City Attorney Terry Dixon, should I recuse myself due to potential conflict of interest, because it's going to be on Sun Point?
That would be my recommendation.
Very good. Then our Mayor Protem will take over.
You do need to briefly explain your potential conflict.
Yes, because of potential conflict of interest with ICF. Thank you.
All right, sorry to.
Good evening, Mr. Gall. Can you state your name and address, please?
Robert Gall, 2592 to Pasafino, and I'm representing Country View Estates. Just wanted to say thank you to Elaine and also to Fred, but he's not here. They took the time to meet with us personally, as far as Luke and Debbie, and discuss some of the issues and some of the information we have found out about Sun Point. So I wanted to reach out and let Jerry, Lori, and John Mark let you guys know, we really would like to meet with you before the December 5th meeting, because we've heard from a lot of the constituents via social media and personally about some issues that maybe haven't been discussed yet. So I want to take the time to say thank you for the continuance as far as on the 5th of December, and we're excited, because we're going to have quite a turnout and lots of people who want to put a voice to their vote. So thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you for being here. Councilwoman Davies?
Just want to let you know, I did meet with them a couple weeks ago.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Just also note, I, too, had a meeting with them. Thank you. I, too, had a meeting with them and received their invitation, and we're working out times to have the second meeting, so work on, thank you.
City Clerk Gomez, are there any other gold slips for Sun Point? Okay, want to get the mayor?
All right, now we're getting to consent calendar. Public communications is now closed. We will now move on to our consent calendars, items 1 through 6. Are there any items that need to be pulled for comments or discussions?
I'm going to pull item 3.
Item 3 by Councilmember Jerry Schlusewitz.
By the way.
And I want to pull item number 1 for my recusal of ICF.
I'll make a motion to move the remaining second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion is moved. Item number 3, Councilmember Jerry Schlusewitz.
Again, this meeting didn't go as it's laid out in here, and this is pretty clear on the video. And again, we still don't have the September 5th, you know, minutes back because of some of those same type of claims. I just would like to have the staff, you know, look at the video, watch it real closely, lay it out as it went, so we have factual remembrance of what happened. So I'd like to just table this till next meeting.
Mr. City Attorney Terry Dixon, please.
Certainly, we have no problem in responding to Councilmember Schlusewitz's request to take another look at the minutes. More than happy to do that.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion is approved unanimously.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Me.
Jerry? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Jerry Schlusewitz. All right, now we're getting to city council.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, please.
I'd just like to make a comment on item number 4, just so the public's aware that we have sponsored three of our teams who are going on to championship games, three baseball teams. One will be going to a championship in April, and then two will be going to Cooperstown in July. So I don't know if those are videotaped, or if there's a YouTube video, but for communications, perhaps if there is of those championship games and there are hometown teams, maybe we can put those on our website when they happen. Thank you.
Very good. Our first business item this evening is city council item number 1, and that is the selection of mayor and Mayor Protem. Mr. Terry Dixon.
Maybe I missed it, but I'm not sure you actually voted on number 1. Seems to me it was removed from the consent calendar. There was a reclusive on the ICF item, but I don't believe there was an actual motion in action on the whole warrant register.
Okay, so on item number 1, myself recusing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
So it's passed 4 to 1.
Actually, 4, 0, 1.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your correction and amplification.
I'm sorry, and who made the motion to move that item?
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second it. Thank you.
All right, every year at this juncture, we have the selection of mayor and Mayor Protem, and I just wanted to assure our community that this is an open city. And with all that, I would welcome any motion for nomination of the mayor, and then subsequent to that, by Mayor, for Mayor Protem.
I'll make a motion for Elaine Genoway as mayor.
Any other nominations? All in favor?
Need a second?
I'll second it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No.
Okay, the motion is approved 4 to 1. Now, selection of the Mayor Protem, do I have a nomination for Mayor Protem?
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Jennings.
Aye, second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No.
Okay, the motion is approved 4 to 1. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Our last business item is city council item number 2, and that is to appoint and approve an employment agreement with new city manager, interim assistant city manager, Bill. Please provide a staff report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Tonight is a new beginning and an end of a recruitment process that you all were very much involved in, and just for the public's edification, we started a recruitment in August. We received over 50 applications for city manager. Our recruitment was conducted by Dave Morgan of Ralph Anderson and Associates. Going through those applications, we received many, many good qualified applicants, and council met twice to interview the top applicants for the position of city manager, and ultimately resulted in an employment offer to Christine Ridge, who is currently the Assistant City Manager of Anaheim. She's here tonight in the audience. And we have before you tonight her employment agreement, and then according to the government code, there is a statement that our Mayor Minigar will need to read. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you for your presentation. Well, the City Council unanimously offered an annual salary of $258,000 through their negotiator to Catherine Ridge for the position of city manager. This salary is based upon a number of factors, including the salaries of comparable positions, relevant, prior experience, prior city manager salary, and Ms. Ridge's current salary and benefits. The city will contribute $18,000 annually toward deferred compensation and receives the same benefits the last city manager was receiving. The agreement can be terminated by the city at any time, with six months severance pay for termination without cause, or by Ms. Ridge with 30 days' notice. There will be no housing loan or temporary housing allowance provided. That's the official statement by the City Council, and do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Or if there are any discussions before we move to the motion?
No discussions on the item.
Okay, I move to approve.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Ms. Ridge. You are, out of 52 qualified candidates that this great City Council voted for you unanimously, you are the best for this great city. We all look forward to work with you, and this is, as I said, we want to see this great city to be greater. When you join the city, and I'm sure you bring a wealth of knowledge, experience in all different spectrum of city government, and I have no doubt that you would be the best city manager that we are going to be having. So, welcome to the great city of Laguna Niguel. Now, on to other business and council reports. I start from my far-right Councilmember Jerry Slusiewicz.
I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, be safe, and happy holidays, and we'll see you guys soon. There's a lot of activities in December coming up, and hopefully you can have your families come out and participate. Thank you again, and happy Thanksgiving.
Councilmember Lori Davies, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple quick things. I was elected to as First Vice President for the ACCLC, so I look forward to venturing into that. And also, Councilmembers Slusiewicz and myself, with Public Works, had a meeting with Tier 3. We're really finalizing the details. It's exciting to see, and something that we talked about is perhaps, this'll be over by the park, doing a time capsule, because we'd be hoping to break ground 2020, and it would be our 30-year anniversary, and we thought, what better than go ahead and do a time capsule, which we've never done before, and, you know, maybe throw another 30 years on that. So, they're gonna start looking, you know, someplace that we'll remember, because I know there was a city, no names here, that forgot where their time capsule was. So, we'll make sure that we mark that.
But it's too close to our city.
We'll make sure that someone knows that 30 years afterwards, but I'm excited. The Tier 3 is gonna be fantastic. I'm looking forward to everyone to be able to see a little bit more of it as we go down. I want to wish everyone a very blessed Thanksgiving, and I want to thank Mayor Minigar. You've done a fantastic job. You stepped in when it wasn't always easy to. You should be very proud of what you've done. I'm proud of you to the fact that I know you and that you put your family first, and that's what you're doing, and it's been a pleasure and an honor to serve underneath you, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem, elect John Mark Jennings.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to dispel any rumor. There is no truth that the time capsule will be large enough to include the contents of my garage. I would like to clean that out, but I have to do that somewhere else. This is truly a great night. You know, leadership is not something that can ever be taken for granted or given. It's gotta be fostered, it's gotta be sought out, it's gotta be intentional. And for all those reasons, it is just with extreme pleasure that I welcomed Christine to the city. I think that with a nationwide search of very qualified candidates, we are truly humbled to have somebody of your stature come here and to help us out, and I'm just really, I'm really looking forward to it. I think that Laguna Niguel has made an excellent choice there. I think it's a huge win for us, and we are definitely on the right path. I know that she's got the right skills and the right fit for our cities and our many constituencies and our business communities, and importantly, our city staff, and I really hope that there's a very good and positive and fruitful, forward-thinking relationship that comes out of that. Also, I wanted to thank all the candidates who applied for that. That's not an easy process to do. It's a very thorough going-through. They came with tremendous gratitude, and the interviews went very well, and I just wanted to say a big thank you to them. I thought that process was one that I was very proud of as a city, and I especially want to thank, and we should all thank, Dave Morgan and his company for the huge debt of gratitude that we owe them for the executive search and bringing all those qualified candidates to us. You know, we start with a blank slate, and Dave and his people are the ones that went and filled that out for us and brought them all to us. So, any good that comes from that certainly started with Dave, and you have our tremendous I also don't want to step past it too quickly, that I wanted to make sure that our interim city manager, Steve, and our assistant city manager know that you have, and I told you this today, but I want to say it publicly, that you have my very deep, sincere appreciation for stepping into a mayor that could have easily been very difficult to handle, and I want to thank you and your families and all that for all that you've given us over the past few months. I encourage you to stick around the city. I kind of like having you guys here, and I appreciate all that you do, and I look forward to working with you in all of these new capacities. So, thank you very much for that. Another appreciation, I had a great time along with Mayor Minigar on Saturday night. We got to go to the Employee Appreciation Dinner, and that's really an invitation that I covet, because that's the employees of the city having their own thing, but they were kind enough to invite us to it. So, it was very special. There's a masquerade ball, so I really have no idea who was there. I bet everybody had masks on, so for all I know, for all you all know, I wasn't there either, but it was, in all honesty, it was a lot of fun. It's good to see the camaraderie amongst our staff, and I really encourage that, and I think it's a great thing. We had a, what I thought was a very interesting and open discussion this week at the Economic Development Ad-Hoc Committee with Mayor-elect Elaine Genoway. And I were on the committee along with city staff, and we're trying to come up with some ideas to think very forwardly about the city. What can we do proactively to project future economic development that might not be going on? That's not just filling the stores that are around, but it's something bigger than that, and trying to think what our five-year, 10-year, and even beyond forecast looks like, and what we can do to fill that, and what that means to the demographics of the city and sort of who we are. So, I like where that was started, and I like where it's headed, so I look forward to more of that. Also, wanted to acknowledge a very interesting event. I know Mayor Pro Tem Genoway was there as well. We had a History of Laguna Niguel event, and I think the last time we had a council meeting, Mr. Wells appeared and was telling us about it going to happen, and it happened the next night, and we went to that. Truly a fascinating thing, you know? Laguna Niguel is the first master-planned community in the country. Most people don't know that. We have this amazing history, and over the course of three hours, we heard about that history, saw the signs and the photographs and everything, just fascinating. And I want to say thank you to him for that and for all that. Thank you to the Chamber for the Shop Laguna Niguel thing. I plan to do that. I don't know that it'd be cool if I won the thousand bucks, but at least I'm gonna keep doing it anyway, and we'll encourage everyone else to do that. And just to echo what Councilwoman Davies said, Mayor Minigar, I truly appreciate what you did. It could not possibly have been easy to step in when you did, and I want to thank you for that and thank your family for all that you did, and I appreciate that very much. And with all that, have a happy Thanksgiving. Take care.
Thank you. Mayor-elect Elaine Genoway.
Thank you, Mayor Minigar. I have a whole page full of meetings, but I won't go through all of them. I'll just give a couple of highlights. First of all, I want to, you know, as I was getting ready for tonight, I thought, there's a reason that Veterans Day and Thanksgiving are the same month. I mean, I know historically, there's a reason, but it just is appropriate that during this month, when we're very thankful and realize what our blessings are, that's when we also recognize our veterans. So, we had a wonderful Veterans Day ceremony at Sea Country. We have this every year on Veterans Day. We had some fantastic speakers from the Freedom Committee of Orange County, and sharing their stories from World War II and the Cold War and the Korean War. So, I want to give a big thank you to staff at the senior center. It was, everything was very smooth. They were very welcoming. And then the Military Support Committee, our Boy Scouts and our Girl Scouts were a big part of the ceremony. They loved doing it, and it's also, you know, getting our youth involved and having our youth recognize the sacrifices that our veterans and their families have made. And the Military Support Committee members were there both volunteering and also being recognized. But a lot of other things happened this month, or, excuse me, only in the last two weeks, and we did have a Military Support Committee meeting yesterday, and the crew of the USS Stockdale and also of our 140th Army Helicopter Assault Unit, they will be marching in the parade down Crown Valley, so we're looking forward to that, and then our city hosts them for lunch and after the parade. Last Tuesday was the Junior Civic Workshop, and the topic was the partnership between the city and the businesses and the Chamber of Commerce, and why is it important for a city to have businesses that are thriving and providing the goods and services to the residents? So, our middle schoolers get it. They understood that. They made that connection. They had a lot of fun. So, thank you to Director Roseberry for presenting, and also for the Chamber of Commerce, and they kicked off the Shop Laguna Niguel campaign with our middle school students, so we're gonna start them shopping early. But thank you to the Chamber for participating in that. You know, many of us up here have shown our appreciation tonight, and I just, I have to echo that. Steve Erlinson and Debbie Bell, you really stepped up to the plate. They have done a yeoman's job in filling the interim city manager and interim Assistant City Manager positions, and I think it just boils down to one thing. I mean, it shows they love our city, because there's no other reason why you would have done that. It was a lot of work, very compressed, a lot of moving parts, and, but you did a fantastic job, and really heartfelt gratitude to both of you. And we're looking forward to welcoming Ms. Ridge to the city family. I think when you get to know her, you will be absolutely delighted that she is here with us. She has a breadth of skills that will really complement the city, and also a very deep skill set in finance. And you know that right now in finance, we're reviewing a lot of our policies and procedures, so that'll be excellent for the city, but I know that all of our staff and our community will look forward to meeting her and welcoming her, and we just can't wait till you start. And thank you, Dave Morgan, for bringing her to us. Okay? And Mayor Minigar, you stepped in, you did a great job, you love your city, we know that. We appreciate all that you've done, all the sacrifice that you've made of your time and your talent and your family. So, thank you very much. So, I wish all of you a very blessed Thanksgiving, and on Thanksgiving, when you're gathered with your family, also sing happy birthday to Councilman Jennings.
Oh, happy birthday.
Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. My, not to repeat what my colleagues mentioned, on Wednesday, November 8th, with Mayor-elect Elaine Genoway, I attended the Senator Pat Bates meeting with mayors and Mayor Pro Tems in Laguna Hills. It's her annual Mayors and Mayor Pro Tems Roundtable Meeting, basically to update us with what's going on in Sacramento that would potentially impact our great city. On Thursday, November 9th, I attended SCAGS, Southern California Association of Governments' 8th Annual Economics Summit with former Governor Pete Wilson in downtown Los Angeles. On Tuesday, November 4th, I attended the Multinigal Water District's Turf Transformation Event. I applaud you for doing a great job. You're serving our citizens, our residents, and we appreciate for your achievements. I don't want to repeat what honorable Duane Cave kept mentioning, 500 million gallons of dollars of water savings, and also 5 million square feet of turf removal. That's a big accomplishment. Those are the two highlights of what Multinigal Water District has done for our great city and other adjacent cities. On Wednesday, November 15th, with Mayor-elect Elaine Genoway, I attended the Cub Scout PAC-77 Workshop at LDS Church. We were discussing, it was a public forum for these young kids, these future leaders to talk about leadership, what it takes to be an affluent, first-class city. We went over how the government runs and how we can take advantage of the democratic system that we have in this city, in this county, in this state, and in this great country. Ms. Ridge, again, I truly welcome you. I've served the city for over 21 years. We really love your credentials and what you're gonna be bringing to this city, and I have no doubt, I'm 100% confident that you're gonna be a superstar, and you're gonna be leading this great city again to a greater venture. And last but not least, it's been an honor and a privilege for me to serve this great city for 21 years, and specifically and especially this year, during all the chain of events that had happened in this city as the mayor, to be on the hot seat, and I look forward to work with all of my colleagues in the council. I congratulate Mayor-elect Elaine Genoway, Mayor Pro Tem John Mark Jennings, and I'm 100% sure that with the knowledge, information, and experience that they bring to this City Council, this city, effective January 1st, 2018, is gonna be on a different launching path. With that, happy Thanksgiving and happy holidays, and I want to turn it over to our staff, Chief Matthew Barr.
I won't go into too much detail, but I do want to congratulate those of you who are stepping into new positions, and to thank those that are stepping down from interim positions. They've done a fantastic job, and it's been a pleasure working with them, and I look forward to working with those who are stepping up for a short time. I do also want to remind everybody that alcohol and Thanksgiving, while it's a nice thing, sometimes they don't mix. Please remember, don't drink and drive this weekend, and also, sometimes alcohol and family get-togethers don't mix well either. Please remember, we don't want to be part of your Thanksgiving, so think of the positive things in your family when you're together, not the negative things. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Interim Assistant City Manager Debbie Bell.
I just wanted to say thank you for all of your kind words and for all of your support, and the support of really the entire city staff. Could not have been able to get much of what I've been able to get done without all of the help from everyone who stepped in, you know, from either answering questions, where is Debbie, which meeting room is she in, down to, has she signed that PAF that we're waiting for, because the payroll can't go until she turns in that paperwork. So, I really appreciate all the staff and all the support that they gave me, and I wish all of you a happy Thanksgiving.
Our interim city manager, Steve Erlinson.
I would like to congratulate Mayor-elect Genoway, Mayor Pro Tem-elect. Well, I would like to congratulate Mayor-elect Genoway, Mayor Pro Temp-elect Jennings, Mayor Minigar, thank you for your support. I'd like to thank the entire city council for their support in the last four months as I've been doing this job. I would also like to congratulate Christine Ridge on her appointment as our new city manager. And I would also, again, like to thank the entire city staff for their support. I would also like to thank the entire city of Laguna Nigal, the citizens, for their support as well. I've received a lot of positive comments from our constituents, and it's been very meaningful to me. I'm thankful to be a part of the city, and I wish all of you collectively a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, Terry Dixon.
Just thank you, just a couple of comments. One, I've appreciated working with Steve and Debbie in their interim positions, and I'd like to, again, thank, personally thank them for the work that they've done, and I'd like to thank Mayor Minigar for stepping in and do some trying times, and Mayor Pro Tim, former Mayor Pro Tim and former Mayor Minigar for stepping in, and I'd like to wish everybody, the council, the staff, and members of the public, a happy Thanksgiving and a happy holidays.
Thank you, Terry. Our Orange County Fire Authority Chief. Next, Ms. Kalina North, our Community Engagement Manager.
I'd like to say congratulations, Mayor Pro Temp-elect Jennings, as well as Mayor-elect Genoway, and then I also want to say thank you to outgoing Mayor Fred Minigar, and I had a great time working with you the last couple of months very closely. Also, just wanted to announce briefly that this Friday, we're going to be releasing, relaunching our e-newsletter, so if you're interested in signing up to receive city information and events, please go onto our city's website, and there's a button called notify me, click on that, and there's a list of subscriptions that you can sign up for. And with that, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Ms. North. Now, our Engineering Services Manager, Mr. Ziad Masboudi.
I just want to wish congratulations to all, and a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Now, we're getting to Ms. Eileen Gomez, our esteemed city cleric.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for, I really appreciate serving with you as my mayor. I've known you for many years, even when I was in Colton, and I just think very highly of you and your family, and I, I think the city is very blessed to have you as part of our council. I also want to congratulate Mayor-elect Elaine Genoway, it's going to be a pleasure to serve with you as our mayor, and also congratulations to Mayor Pro Temp-elect John Mark Jennings, it'll be a pleasure to serve with you as well. And I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and I also wanted to welcome Christine Ridge, and I can't wait to start working with you as well.
Very good. Our Parks and Rec Director, Ms. Allison Giglio.
I have a lot to say tonight.[1601.13][1601.13][laughing] Thank you, Mayor Minigar, for your service. I know how much the city means to you, I can tell every time I talk to you, so it's been a pleasure having you serve as our mayor. Congratulations to both of you in your new roles, look forward to that, and thank you to all the city council for your support with everything, and thank you, Debbie and Steve, you guys have been nothing but helpful and supportive, and I know those are big shoes to fill, so, welcome, boss, la corte de meeting and working with you. And now, we have a lot coming up in the next couple of weeks. The Recreation Elves are collecting letters to Santa at Crown Valley Park through December eighth. All letters are going to be forwarded to the North Pole for a response from Santa. The annual Christmas tree lighting is going to be on Saturday, December second, from five to seven PM here at City Hall. The event is free, and we'll have live music, kids' events, treats, and Santa is going to stop by as well. The entry deadline for the Holiday Lights Decorating Contest is December fourth at nine AM, that is a Monday, so we give you a weekend to figure it out and get your decorations up and get your entry in, and we're going to judge that Tuesday, December fifth. There is a entry form available in the city's recreation brochure, and it is supposed to be on the city website. I'm going to be talking to Kalina about putting that up, a little oversight. The Holiday Parade is Saturday, December ninth, at ten AM on Crown Valley Parkway. Hanukkah Celebration and menorah lighting is Sunday, December seventeenth, at five-thirty. That is, both of those events are free, and in addition to all these activities, we have events at Sea Country Center, skate camps, and Santa's going to be at Crown Valley Park Pool on December sixth. And for information about all these events, you can go to the city website or the city's recreation brochure. Very thankful to work for this city, and I wish everybody here a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our Planning Manager, Mr. John Morgan.
Well, not going to be able to top that, so I'm going to keep it short and continue the trend and just wish everyone a wonderful Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, our Public Works Director, Mr. Nosa Abazade.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank you for your fantastic service to the city in the past few months. I'd like to congratulate Mayor-elect Genoway and Mayor Pro Temp-elect Jennings. I'd like to express my appreciation to Stephen Erlinson and Debbie Bell for their hard work and dedication to the city over the last few months. As everyone said, they stepped in at a rather difficult moment, and they've done a great job, and again, my personal thanks to them. And I'd also like to welcome our new leader, look forward to working with her, and finally, a happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you very much. We are now adjourned at eight fifteen. Thank you, and have a nice evening, and happy holidays, and happy Thanksgiving.